All right, good evening, audience. We are back in open session. Thank you for your patience. We do not have any public comment. I just checked that right before we re-engaged here. Is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda from anyone at the table? Nope? Okay. With that, we will move into the superintendent's report.
Dr. Ryan Toye.
All right, thanks. So our first item is, we have a group of students from Ames Elementary. We have our music teacher, Mr. Jack DiStefano here. And Mr. Gierman, the principal's over here. So you guys take it away here and make your introductions.
Thank you very much. Good evening, District 96 Board of Education, Dr. Ryan Toye. I always love the student presenter board meetings. I know at the beginning of the school year, Dr. Ryan Toye will send a sign-up sheet to the principals. We get to sign up and pick a month. And then forces me to think outside the box of something exciting to bring to you guys. We've seen a cow adopted at Ames. We had to present about that at the town of Manhattan. We had last year. And this year, I went to Mr. DiStefano. I'm like, what do you think? Can we do something musical? And he's like, I would absolutely love to. So he got together some of his most talented third-grade musicians. Right, guys? All right, thumbs up. And he has a lovely presentation for you this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DiStefano.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much to the board and everyone in the community for having us here. And thank you, parents, for chaperoning tonight. Your kids are really, really excited to be here. My name is Jack DiStefano.
Jack!
Mr. D to you. And I am the elementary music teacher at Ames. I've been there for four years, and this is my fourth year teaching in general. And we're going to be talking about how we're integrating social and emotional learning into the general music classroom. So just a little background on our curriculum. We are an Orf-based curriculum. Carl Orf is a prolific composer, writer, and pedagogue. And he really fosters student learning through creativity and exploration. Best way I can describe it is, students will come in, we'll play a fun game. They'll actually be doing the concepts without knowing it. Then we're going to go to the board and be like, wait a minute. You actually just did what I'm going to teach you. Let's explore this a little bit further. And through that, there's encourages teamwork, fun, engaging lessons, hands-on approach, and obviously a fun and active and engaging learning environment. And for the SEL in this particular unit, it fosters the emotional and social skills to help students manage and build on their own emotions and to have more self-awareness and regulation, which at this age is just very, very vital for this group. For the outcomes of this particular unit, the students are introduced to high doh. We complete and perform the pentatonic scale, which if you're not familiar, is essentially just the black keys on a piano. Why do we use this scale? Because all the sour notes are taken out. So even if a student makes a mistake when improvising, you're still going to hear something nice. Can we actually demonstrate that? Would you guys grab your mouths real quick and just randomly play? Except for you, Charlotte, I'm so sorry. All right, go ahead and try. But you hear it. There's nothing sour about it. It's actually, it's pretty lovely the whole way through. So another outcome of this is, we're going to explore movements and express emotions through different music, performing the crossover bourdon, which my professional fray over there is going to do, which is excellent for crossing the midline in brain development. And at the end of this whole unit, we get to perform for the early learners at Ames. We don't really get to integrate with them as much. So this way, they get to come in, they get to see it. And it's another way for someone except an adult to tell those kids, oh, this is happiness. This is sadness. And it kind of resonates with them a little bit more. And then the main melody you're going to hear tonight is written by Carl Orf as well. So double whammy about the Orf presentation. All right, as we start this unit, I read this book called The Color Monster. And then as I'm reading to it, I sing this melody. Red, yellow, blue, black and green are two. Our emotions fill the colors red, yellow, blue. And then we realize, how does that translate to our soul faj? We then sing. So, mi, re, doh, so, so, mi, re, doh, so, so, la, la, doo, doo, la, la, so, mi, re, doh. The high doh is being indicated by those apostrophes right after. And then we put those on the xylophone. Where does that fall into the equation? And I give them the opportunity, before I teach them, to teach themselves from the melody that they just learned to find that exploration even more. Now, another great element of this progress is, and excuse me. Perfect. We digress and just find what are the emotions and colors and what are their representations? And then we say to ourselves, what movements could we do to represent happiness, sadness, anger, fear, and calmness? And then I introduce them some music, whether it's from Pharrell all the way back to Vivaldi. So they're getting the greats from the past and from the present. And how does that music make you feel? When you're feeling sad, do you listen to music that makes you feel sad? Or do you listen to music that's happy to try to get you out of that funk? Or do you need to stay in that funk for a little bit and feel those emotions of that aspect? So how does music relate? And I'm going to skip through all of these videos because as much as they're great, we're going to keep going. All right? Don't get too sad, any kids. All right, here we go. Let's get started. You guys ready? All right, without further ado, Ms. Reddiker's class presenting The Color Monster. This is The Color Monster. Today, we woke up feeling confused, and he doesn't know why. Are you all mixed up again, Color Monster? Your emotions don't work well when they're all jumbled up. If you'd like, why don't we try to separate them and put them into their own jar? If you'd like, I can help you. Let's try to make sense of how we feel. Red, you said, here you go.
Red, yellow, blue. Black and green are two. Our emotions fill the colors red, yellow, blue.
This is happiness.
Yay!
It shines yellow like the sun and twinkles like the stars. When you're happy, you want to jump, dance, laugh, and play. You want to share your happiness with everyone. Red, you said, here you go.
Red, yellow, blue. Black and green are two. Our emotions fill the colors red, yellow, blue.
This is sadness. It's lonely and blue like a rainy day and washes over you like the sea. When you're sad, you want to be alone. You don't want to do anything except maybe cry. It's okay to cry, Color Monster. Red, you said, here we go.
Red, yellow, blue. Black, red, green are two. Our emotions fill the colors red, yellow, blue.
This is anger.
Yeah!
It burns red like a fire and is hard to stamp out. When you're angry, life can feel unfair. Sometimes you want to take your anger out on others. But I'll be nice to you, Color Monster, and all of your anger will disappear. Red, you said, here we go.
Red, yellow, blue. Black, red, green are two. Our emotions fill the colors red, yellow, blue.
This is fear.
Ah!
It hides and runs away like a mouse in the night. When you're afraid, you feel tiny. You don't think you have the courage to face the gray shadows. But I can help you find your way. Red, you said, here we go.
Red, yellow, blue. Black and green are two. Our emotions fill the colors red, yellow, blue.
This is calm. It's quiet like the trees and as light as green leaves swaying in the wind. When you're calm, you breathe slowly, deeply. You feel at peace. Two times. Red, you said, here we go. Oh, yeah, one time. Red, you said, here we go.
Red, yellow, blue. Black, red, green are two. Our emotions fill the colors red, yellow, blue.
Now you can rest, Color Monster. All of your feelings are in the right place. See? Don't you feel so much better? Uh-oh. I see you're feeling something new. You look different, Color Monster. Tell me, how do you feel now? Red, you said, here we go.
Red, yellow, blue. Black and green are two. Our emotions fill the colors red, yellow, blue. Red, yellow, blue. Black and green are two. Our emotions fill the colors red, yellow, blue.
The end. Thank you. I'd like to pray a Charlotte, Adriana, Noah, Franco, and Abby. Thank you guys all so much for coming.
Sometimes our board members have questions for the musicians or the music teacher.
You love me.
So that was spectacular.
I feel so relaxed.
Yeah, right? I've never seen this book before, so that's a pretty good book, too. So for the kids, I'm just kind of curious, does anybody have any... Would you like to share kind of what your favorite part of this learning journey was? Or anything in particular that you learned out of this exercise or instruction? Go ahead.
I was learning how to play these new instruments and finding out the journey of high doh and stuff.
Anyone else have any comments of what they experienced during this whole unit? Something they liked about it? Go ahead.
The different emotions and how to express ourselves.
Oh!
Anyone else?
No? Okay. Does anybody tell me what instrument? Are these all xylophones or are they different? These are all Orf xylophones. They're handmade in Germany. So we get these from West Music. These are actually Mr. Black's from the middle school. He was very kind enough to let me use these, so I didn't have to lug these all the way from Central. So, but he actually got a grant for these. But these are spectacular instruments that we get to use every day. And we have quite a bit at Ames right now, so we're hoping to get some more in the future.
I think we have them at all the elementaries, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. I see them removing, what are those called? Keys or?
They're bars.
Bars. Is removing bars, putting them back on, is that to just assist in kind of creating fewer?
Fewer mistakes, yes. Because if you leave all the bars on, it's a chromatic scale. So it's do, re, mi, fa, sol, la, ti, doh, which is the 60th anniversary of The Sound of Music everywhere. So it's these. But so when we take, we take about three bars off normally to create that pentatonic scale. But by the time they get to fourth and fifth grade, when we're really pushing music notation, composition, we try to keep them all on. But it's great because if I have a student that's really struggling with a certain aspect or a certain melody, we can take those bars off and accommodate for them the best way we can.
It's a very soft sound, too, so I'm sure it's good for your head at the end.
Soft for six of them, but once you stop.
All right, that's fair.
But they're excellent listeners at Ames, and you know, they know when Mr. B is getting a little overstimulated. It's in the eyes. So, but overall, yeah, they do a pretty good job.
Any other questions?
Well, that was a wonderful performance. Thank you for coming out tonight and sharing.
Thanks for coming.
With any parents leaving right now, we could definitely use some help carrying some of these back. That'd be very lovely. Thank you so much. And thank you so much to the board for having us.
Absolutely, thank you for coming.
And Ms. Reddiker, it's your student, so thank you for joining as well.
We appreciate it.
And Mr. Gierman, it's good to see you back after your absence.
Yeah, I didn't know either. The bites had anything to do with the sound or if it was just...
Especially made in the group.
Or if it's just because of how they say, like, to create a...
Is this a new incorporation with the museum?
No, no, still how's is always using, Jonah and Arda uses, they all go to training. Kind of on their own, like, it's their own. I have a niece that's in education in Wisconsin, and she goes to Orf. Like, it's the thing of, like, it's body movement, less music. Maybe I just got it wrong. He just really well explained, he just explained it really well, like, even better than I understood.
I always see them at Hollywood when they do performances, at least like two or three out at the front.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now we have one other special presentation. And I think we'll start with the video here, Mr. Hanky, and then I'll... Okay, this is what, two and a half minutes long? So, all right. You want to... Don, can you hit play on that? Or who hits play? David? How do we get it going?
Hi, my name is David Hanky, and I am the only school teacher here in the district. I have an undergraduate degree in biology and fine art and a master's in STEM education. This is my fifth year teaching STEAM at Hauser and my 10th year teaching overall. Before becoming a teacher, I worked in the exhibitions department at the Field Museum in Chicago Botanic Garden. These experiences gave me a unique perspective on how to connect hands-on learning with real-world applications to my students. My sixth graders take an interest in class where I try to ignite creativity with many hands-on elite projects. The seventh graders have Design for Disaster, which expands on their science knowledge, and we study natural phenomenon like hurricanes and earthquakes. By integrating tools like GIS mapping and 3D printing, they can test their models. The eighth graders have museum engineering. Students are given real-world challenges and create projects like booknotes for the local library and community programs like the Best Buddies Trunk or Treat event. I work hard to make my classroom a welcome and inclusive space. For example, a student with special needs shared his love of Angry Birds with me. I developed an activity where students design and build towers, catapults, and projectiles, and then students take turns battling one another. It's a huge favorite. I see myself as a teacher, tutor, mentor, and coach, but also as a salesman and entertainer. If my students don't buy what I'm selling and if we can't have some fun along the way, then I'm not doing my job. But just don't take it from me, let's hear from the students themselves.
All right, Roman, tell me a little about a project that you enjoyed in our class.
I liked how we did our waterfall challenge, like this one that's right here, which is basically mine. We had to put a tennis ball in there, and we had a fan going to see if we will knock over an island water level throughout the thing. And also the next thing I also liked, which is like the Angry Bird one, where we had to build a catapult. I mean, catapult. And then we had to knock over some buildings. And those were my two favorite ones.
Um, I would describe your class as like, it's just like a really fun class. Like, I come from BLA, so it's like when I get to do museum engineering, it's just like a good break from, like, school. And like Mr. Hanky, he usually like evokes creativity in me because I'm not really like a creative person. And so the classes are just like really fun and really enjoyable.
Um, it's a very friendly environment. You get to like, really, like, get your creative juices flowing while you're in there. You're allowed to like be free and you're in control of your creative choice. So if you need this, you can grab this, and then you know exactly what you're doing. It's very student-focused, student-led, and I really like that.
And don't forget, a snow day doesn't mean a day off from learning.
All right. So I learned, what, two weeks ago, that Mr. Hanky is receiving an opportunity. It's really an award. And this was his video to apply for the award, and then I'm going to let you share a little bit more. But it is through the Smithsonian National Air and Space Museum. David's going to be going for, is it two weeks?
Two weeks in July, yes.
Two weeks in July to learn more about STEM education opportunities. And it just, it felt like this really wonderful award for David, but really a wonderful award for District 96 and for Hauser and for the STEAM program. And just certainly shows another great thing that one of our great teachers is doing. And just wanted all of you to have an opportunity to hear about it and see it. I said to David, would you mind coming to the board meeting? And here he is.
It's tough following those kids, though. I've been in there long enough to know that you never want to follow the kids.
But truly, congratulations on an award. It's really very much one that you sought out and knew that it would really enhance your work here as a Hauser educator. So I don't know if you want to share a little bit more about what, maybe what the video didn't share? Or any of the board members have questions?
It, this was something I saw like pop up in an ad on social media. It was like right before winter break. Just put it off, you know? You had, there's like all these essay questions, try to get references and make a little video. So I actually put this all together like two days before it was due. But what Harmon said there at the end was, you know, truly like the aspect of what I'm going for, to have student-led, right, student choice. I try and have my classroom where it's, they're in a position where they're not afraid to fail, right? And to be able to, like, willing to take a risk, because that means more to me. Like, the process, right? Not just like the final product, but the process itself. And I think that's what I'll hopefully take a lot out of this program, is like more hands-on, more process and collaboration with some other great teachers across the country. You know, I'm one of 30 teachers in the country that was selected for this. I don't know how that happened. But I feel really, really lucky for this opportunity, and I'm excited about it. So, yeah, so July 7th, I'll go for two weeks in DC. And then I'll go the following year for another two weeks as sort of like a mentor for the new cohort that comes in. That is really cool.
Angela has a question.
Angela just wants to add something, because I don't think David would brag on himself. When Mr. Hanky started here five years ago, we were transitioning from a really challenging STEAM program that not all students wanted to participate in because it was just a really higher-level class. And over the five years that he's been here, kids are taking this class. You saw right there just how kids are, this is fun, it's not like school, all of those types of things. And that's truly a testament to Mr. Hanky. He has built the Hauser STEAM program and has continued to help it evolve and find new ways to engage in the community and to make it real-life learning for our students. So that's something that the kids aren't saying because they don't know that piece. But as a director of teaching and learning, and having worked with David for five years and watched this program evolve and change into what it is, this is all because of Mr. Hanky. And so I'm excited to see what he brings back from this experience because I know it's going to impact our kids in such a positive way.
Thank you, that's very kind. So I got to say, I'm going to call out one thing that you said in this video that I think is critical, and that's the salesperson comment. And I work for a financial institution, and we have a marketing team, a sales team that's out in the field trying to drive in business and stuff. And so I, over the years, I've had a number of people that work under me say, well, I'm not in sales. I'm not a salesperson. That's their job. And I've always said, everybody is a salesperson, because it's what you said. If I'm not selling it to the kids to get them to buy in, it's not going to work. So that really struck me, and I can't agree with that. I absolutely agree with that. Yeah, I mean, that's something I sort of discovered like early on in teaching. And it's just like, you know, I know that kids are not going to like, whatever subject I'm teaching, they're not going to love it as much as I am, right? And as much as I want them to, but, so I know that I have to put myself out there. And, you know, I think by them seeing that I'm very genuine, right? And having a little bit of fun along the way, it makes a big difference, I know for sure. And reaching kids who maybe aren't into it, even just a little bit, it's very meaningful. You know, it's, you go home and tell stories about that with the family and everything. So, yeah, it's great. Well, thank you for putting the video in. And did I hear you say 30? Or some, one of you two just said, there are only 30?
30 educators across the country?
That's incredible. Through the country. Congratulations, that's amazing.
I will also just point out, because it's so important, and we all strive to do this, and STEAM gives us a unique opportunity, I think, and David, just your skill and expertise around it, too, is this idea, the student said, I need to lead my own learning. You know, so we have in our strategic plan, this big idea that all kids need to lead their own learning, right? And it's just the hands-on opportunities, the engagement that the STEAM program brings. We want that to be true in all classes, of course. But I think your teaching and what this kid said here really pointed that out, so thank you for that.
Yeah, you know, I have to thank Harmon, too, because you would have swore by that last comment that he made, you know?
He was reading out a textbook?
Yeah, I'm like, all right, Harmon, here, like, read this one, right? But, you know, it was all him. And like, I was like, that's it, this is the one I'm sending in.
Yeah, it was great. David, we did, we made you a certificate because that's what we do here in school. So just congratulating you on this teacher innovator opportunity and praying that...
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I'll put this right on the refrigerator right now.
Yeah.
Right next to the agenda, so.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it. I was going to say, I really like that shirt, too. I haven't seen that one before. I like, I like it. Well, thank you for bringing that, too, because like with the band award thing that we've gotten three years in a row and this, and I'm trying to think of some of the other, but just continuing to articulate, like, we're here to make these decisions, to support these. And so bringing these forth to see what we're actually collectively doing here and for the community to see what the output of this is, not just with the students, but with our staff as well, is really nice. So thank you for...
Absolutely, you're welcome. And I will always, I tell Mr. DiStefano, as well as all our music teachers, that when I go to a music performance, the people I really like to watch are our music teachers. Our kids are awesome, our kids are great, but the passion and the enthusiasm that they bring. Yeah. And certainly Mr. Hanky. So some, you know, really wonderful examples of great things going on here in District 96. So thanks to all of them who joined us. I have now slightly less exciting items, perhaps. One thing, on March 5th, we did our strategic plan, Living the Plan. And I don't want to gloss over this because truly, all these pieces that you see coming to life are really represented in our strategic plan. And so, as you all know, we are really committed, we were committed, you know, four years ago when we developed this plan, that this plan would not just live on the shelf and that it would not just be a set of goals and strategies that we would refer to occasionally. And the way that we've really been able to do that effectively is to periodically meet with all of the leaders of our, what we call our action teams. So we did that just on March 5th and shared with you a summary from all of that. You can see the questions that the teams contemplated and then came together and shared when we did this Living the Plan session. We are in year four of a five-year strategic plan, really planning and anticipating that next year, you as the board would take a look again, also probably using an outside facilitator to come in and just kind of re-strengthen this plan, certainly develop a new five-year plan. But we also know that there are so many components to this plan, some things that we just aren't done with yet. But also, I know we've talked a lot particularly recently around our mission, our vision, our values. So some goals and strategies are likely to change, but we don't necessarily see our mission, vision, values changing. So, but it would be an opportunity for the community and teachers and administrators, everybody, the board, to come together and just to kind of reaffirm that, are those still the same mission, vision, values that we want to continue with? And then work toward new goals and strategies. So with that, just wanted to share a general overview of the kinds of things that we feel have been some of our greatest accomplishments so far with this strategic plan, but also some of the things that we need to focus on yet in the next year-plus that's remaining and things that we may have to continue to allow to evolve and support into a future plan as well.
Martha, you said next year. When do you think we're going to initiate that new?
I would see, like, maybe in the fall, the board deciding, you know, we worked with CEC last time. We've also worked with a group called Educational Leadership Solutions. Because some changes that were happening with CEC, we moved on, moved over to a different group. I feel like our internal team is really coordinating and running the plan. It does help to bring in an outside facilitator, though, just to kind of direct the process. I would imagine the surveys, the community feedback, just gathering more information, having a chance to weigh all that. So I would envision the board looking at a facilitator and a plan, fall, and then really starting to develop a new plan. Last time, we did it like December, January, February, March. I think by March-ish, we came forward with the new plan. So I think a similar timeline would work. Are there questions or thoughts from the board about that process, just beginning to think about it?
I would align with what you said. And I would just add, using the administrator, like, just the scheduling and organization and making sure it stays on track and moving forward and all of that. Trying to put that on somebody within our district that doesn't really have that expertise, so to speak. I think that was, I don't remember the gentleman's name that we...
Perry Sodwell.
Perry, thank you. But, I mean, I thought he was very good at just, got this much time, get this done, here's your homework, here's the next meeting. So I think there was a lot of value in that, in addition to all the other stuff that they brought with the outside perspectives of other districts and things. So, and I think your timeline probably makes sense from what you said, so.
I'm wondering if, I mean, and I guess we won't know until we dive into it a little further, but has the trend of these sessions, are they more online or Zoom now as opposed to in-person?
Well, that's a good question. I think it's, I think we could do however we want it. We did it on Zoom because it was the pandemic. That wasn't the choice. I mean, that wasn't the preference, but that became our necessity. And, you know, it is interesting, it's like a lot of things, then Zoom just works. So is that a one way to do it? I know some of the other companies rely more maybe on feedback that comes through surveys. CEC's model at the time, if it still is, was to bring in 36 people. I mean, they had a formula to it, and it was, you know, six parents, six, I think we had students, staff members, two board members, administrators, teachers, obviously, so...
Some former students.
Some former students, yeah.
Two, three, I can't remember.
I wouldn't want to rely too much on surveys because I think getting committed people in the room is probably more valuable than a lot of feedback that doesn't necessarily have context to it. And the reason, I don't think surveys can generate a lot of context unless those questions are written super tightly.
And we did a little bit of both with CEC, if you recall. We would meet, and then we would say, like, this is what we're formulating so far. These seem to be the priorities that are emerging. Are these the priorities? So I think when all was said and done, the amount of feedback we got was a lot, right? But there were 36 people in the room having conversations, and I agree, those are really robust.
Using a survey to get priorities, that's fine.
Or feedback on the priorities. So it was a really good process. I, I also really liked the group that we've been working with, you know, in addition, they do it too. I think they have a slightly different model, and I think they may do, bring in a large group of people for one full day, or something like that, on a Saturday. So I think there's all different ways to consider it, and look forward to the opportunity to bring forward some of those ideas for the board to weigh in. And I think it was really instrumental in terms of how, I think all, the board, the administrative team, the teaching staff, the community, really came together and aligned around some key goals. Full-day kindergarten, I believe, in the room continues to be the, the sort of the standout decision that was made. There was so much community feedback, it was clear, there was finance, there was facilities, I mean, it, it really captured every aspect of, of what was in our plan, so. And speaking of kindergarten, I do just have a, a quick update. We have about one hundred and nineteen students in process for registration, so continue to tell your friends and neighbors, it's time to register for kindergarten. Hundred and nineteen is, is kind of reflective and maybe slightly higher than where we were last year at this time. It's, it's a, it's a soft number, because this is still early in the process, and, and as you know, I mean, you can register and enroll for public school anytime, but we also get kind of a surge in the July, August. We just love the idea of getting our numbers and our information as, as, as early as possible. It really does help us with class size and our flexible boundary policy and all those other pieces to it. So that's superintendent's report, a little longer than usual, maybe.
That's right, thank you. All right, we'll move into the consent agenda, so could I get the board secretary to please read tonight's consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the following meetings, February 5th, committee of the whole, February 19th, regular business meeting, the personnel report as presented, our payables pre-list as of February 28th, along with the payables pre-list as of March 19th, the review of the closed session minutes for the previous six months, and destruction of eighteen months' worth of recordings, the LaGrange Area District for Special Education, or LADZI, classroom lease for twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six, and the school district library program grant.
Great, thank you. There's a clarified G5, eight, it's the eighteenth, eighteen months. After eighteen months, we're supposed to destroy them if they don't open them, so, um, not eighteen months' worth of them.
Sorry.
Just, just in case.
Eighteen months, oh.
Does anybody wanna remove any of these items for further discussion before we motion and vote?
Just a comment.
Okay.
Just wanna note that fully support the LADZI lease. We've talked about this before, and sometimes people seem to wonder why we are the home to that classroom, and the fact is, we, our children use it, and it's part of, honestly, that whole spectrum of serving everybody. So, um, it's just, it's a good thing that we do, I'm glad we've got the space, and I think we should continue doing it.
All right.
Thank you, Joe, I'll just echo, I wish we had more space to share, as part of a cooperative, that's how it works, we all cooperate on this, and, but it's great having the classroom at Hollywood, so.
Okay, if no other items, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Kathy, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsavi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, we got a couple procedural items following this one. The first one is the resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-tenured permanent substitute teachers. This is very much a procedural thing that we do year to year, I'm probably not gonna explain this right, could you give the, give kind of a quick over?
Yeah, so our, our permanent substitutes are considered non-permanent, non-long-term employees. As substitutes, they also can hold a substitute license, or they can hold a professional educator license, so a person on a substitute license also could not acquire tenure, but also the way it is set up is that, the system is set up in such a way that our permanent subs are not in a position to gain tenure, so that's why they're non-renewed annually.
And then that same comment applies to the next one, they're just two different categories of people.
Yeah, right.
All right, so, item H, resolution for non-renewal to non-tenured permanent substitute teachers, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing this notice of non-renewal to non-tenured permanent substitute teachers for the individuals named in the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsavi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, second one is for a resolution authorizing the non-renewal to long-term substitute teachers. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-tenured, to, hold on a minute. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-tenured long-term substitute teacher? This is weird, worded weird.
No, because this is a single long-term substitute, yeah.
Okay.
Which is different than the permanent substitutes.
Okay, take three. Board of, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-tenured, to the non-tenured long-term substitute teacher for the individual named in the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, that extra two in there was throwing me off. Any discussion? All right, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsavi?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, the next one is procedural, but very exciting. Approval of Hollywood, the new Hollywood school principal. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 2025-2026 contract for the principal of Hollywood Elementary School to Aaron Dwyer as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Kathy, could you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsavi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great.
All right, so, the discussion, yes, so Aaron Dwyer is here, let me introduce to all of you, you wanna come?
Yes.
Put you on the spot, why not? So, very excited, Aaron came to us through our applicant pool, we had an opportunity to meet one-on-one, and then Aaron was subject to a really large interview team, but really a great interview team made up of, let's see, three of our teachers from Hollywood School, one of our pair professionals from Hollywood School, Hollywood School Secretary, Todd Gierman, one of our other principals, myself, Nora Garrity, Angela Dozel.
Two parents.
And two parents, yes.
Geez. I knew it.
Thank you, I do not wanna.
Very small.
Right, right, yeah.
That's how we roll at Hollywood.
Yeah, yeah, so, anyway, Aaron really roasted the top of our applicant pool, really excited. Aaron is a thirteen-years-experienced in a elementary school district, not that far from here, prior to that, an assistant principal, classroom teacher, a little bit of everything, right?
Dabbled in everything.
Yeah, so.
Truly, I'm, I'm excited to join, I'm honored to take on this role. I live close, and the reputation of this district is outstanding, so I'm honored to take part in this district, to work alongside an amazing admin team, dedicated board, and I'm excited to meet the staff and the families and continue on the tradition of Hollywood School, and continue to foster student growth and learning, and I'm really excited to come back to a K5 building, right now I'm in a 3.5 building, so excited to kind of see the student growth from kindergarten through fifth grade, so thank you for allowing me this opportunity, I'm really excited.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Highly recommended, from everything I heard from, from, well, all the feedback that was funneled through her, I didn't realize your interview panel was quite that large.
Yeah.
So it was a rigorous process, so.
That arrangement did warn me, as we were walking up the stairs, so that helped.
Yeah.
But they were all friendly faces, so that helped.
It was a friendly, it was a friendly team, but, but we also felt it was really representative of staff and parents and leadership team, so.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
I'll also say thank you for, for slipping in the feedback on our reputation out there, it's always hard to understand what your reputation is, and that is, we work very hard to try to have a good one, so I'm glad it's getting out there.
It's out there, it's out there.
All right, cool, thank you, well, welcome.
Yeah, of course, welcome. Thank you so much, I look forward to working alongside all of you.
I was just gonna quickly say, as, welcome as a board member, also as a, as a Hollywood parent, outgoing, you, you were a Hollywood parent as well. You know, there's something so special, as, as you've noticed, about this district, definitely, and of course, I, I think there's something really magical about, you know, we're a little school west of First, and so we look forward to welcoming you to that community as well, and to the district as a whole, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I already feel welcome, so thank you so much.
And we'll be in touch soon, our communication is going out tomorrow to all families, not just Hollywood families, and also to all staff in the morning, and then, then Aaron and I will get to work, she's got some things to, yeah, right, right.
The transitions, I'm excited for that.
Yeah, all right, thanks for coming tonight, too.
Thank you so much.
And you are more than welcome to leave if you would like. But, okay, all right. The next item is Riverside Education Council, do we have any comment?
We still have that addendum contract, sorry.
The adden, oh, I'm sorry, skipped over that one, yep. Approval of the director, an addendum contract for the director we just approved last meeting. So is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the contract addendum for the Director of Technology, Molly Mar Court, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I'll just make a comment, this addendum is, after we approved the last contract, which is effective seven, one, through six-thirty of the following year, Molly is eligible to come work for us for a month early, we thought that'd be a good idea to work alongside Dawn and just kind of catch the ropes and all the, everything that goes into the technology stuff, so this addendum is for one, starting one month earlier as a separate contract, and then going to the full year. Any other questions, comments before we vote?
Overlap for senior administrators is always good.
Yeah.
Just gaining some familiarity and not starting off cold.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsavi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
All right, now, is there any comment from Riverside Education Council? No, okay.
Definitely shaking her head no.
All right, board member comments? Do we have any?
Musical performance was amazing, I think several of us have been there.
Yeah, we were just talking about it before the meeting started, the Hauser Willy Wonka production, their spring musical, I don't even have children that are in it, I go, because it's a entertainment on a Monday or Tuesday, and I like to take my, my son, although I guess they took the elementary students over as part of Little Symphony, so, but he was really excited to eat the set last night, so, we went.
I, my, I didn't have any kids in the performance either, but my, my son wanted to come, because I think they didn't get to see all the, the whole performance.
Yeah, it sucked, it sucked.
He was eager to see the rest of it, and, and probably the candy at the end didn't hurt.
Yeah. Yeah, and they, I heard a couple of you mentioning too, like Aunt Diana's was involved with the ticket thing, and I know there was a couple other, like, community-related things, it just, I spent several hours over the last few weeks helping with stage crew stuff, my kids signed up for that, so I, I got a lot of Dave time, Mr. Mason, and he's, he does, I mean, he ju, it's amazing what he pulled off on that, and he was showing me some of the old ones that he did. I've never actually been to one of these plays, but I've heard about them so much and how, how well they're done, and, yeah, the Willy Wonka one was, was quite something, curtains opening and all the colors and all that kind of stuff was, was pretty cool. Even being part of, like, the behind-the-scenes scene, the final product was still pretty amazing. Any other comments on anything before we move on?
Hope the community, our teachers, enjoy their much-deserved upcoming spring break and find some, yeah, rest in the homestretch of the school year.
All right, that'll move us into a few old business items. Not an action item, just, I'm gonna guess the, just a general update here for the trimester two update?
Yep, so we have an update on trimester two, again, thanks to our tech team and Don Tofano specifically for organizing all of this data for your review, it really helps to see the multiple school years, and then as well as the trimester, trimester one and two combinations, so obviously our trimester two came to an end at a point where we were able to gather this data. It is interesting to look at it in aggregate like this and to see the comparative data, so we're trending in the right direction, I think we're still not at pre-pandemic levels on this, but, right, you note the 2019 pre-pandemic level was nine percent, so we're still at, depending on, on how you look at this overall, what, ten-point-five-nine, eleven-point-three-five percent for the trimester one and two combined.
So I read that as, we must have had a slight uptick with the chronic absenteeism, which wouldn't have anything to do with the little blip that we had.
No, probably not, that was just a single day, that was a weather-related day, if you recall, it was the day we were open when a lot of schools were closed. You know, certainly winter is more the sort of cold and flu season, but again, that chronic absenteeism are those, sort of tracking those same students that miss more than the ten percent of the school year time, so I would think, though, winter would potentially contribute to that, wouldn't help it.
And there's been a lot of bugs going around in January, February, so, okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that before we move on?
I'm assuming it's something the board still wants to, like, I think this is, you know, it makes sense to plug it into board meetings, whether it's, I think we've been using it at Cow, bringing it up at Cow, or at board meeting, it really depends on the timing of the end of the trimester.
Yeah, no, I think this, this is good. Selena, you were kind of the catalyst of this, as a, kind of tracking what you were thinking.
I think it, it's great to keep it, and so we can keep on top of it, and if we need to put more resources towards it, it's a good way for us to just have a visual on it, so, yeah, I'm happy to see it's trending in the right direction, and I know that a lot of work has gone into, to that, and so I'm appreciative of that, and appreciative of getting to see the progress.
I know it's part of the overall report card, do we have it baked into, into our strategic plan anywhere, is like a KPI to be at or below, I mean, maybe just something for futures, strategic plan?
We put attendance in there as a general factor.
But not a.
I don't know, we added, um.
Percent?
We added a chronic absenteeism percentage, like, as a sub-goal under the attendance KPI, at the end of last year, so, oh, yeah, it is, it is officially in there as of last year.
It was ironic, I do remember an early discussion, like, oh, we don't really have attendance issues, so is it really a valuable indicator? That was pre-pandemic and early on in the strategic plan process, so, or maybe it was during the pandemic, but, yeah. So I, I do, I also appreciate tracking, and, and Selena, thank you also for saying that, there, there's a lot of work and effort that goes into just really connecting with the kids that are more chronically absent or at risk to sort of fall into that number, that this is not an issue of kids just deciding not to come to school, it's really not an issue of just illness, it tends to be far more complicated factors, and often it's our social workers, our principals, our team really connecting with families and helping them understand the importance of being in school.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Next item, Blythe Park IGA. We do have a motion in here. If folks are comfortable voting on this, this is a topic we've been talking about for well over a year, I think, in some form or another. I don't remember exactly when our last conversation was. Maybe, I know we were at Hollywood when we got the original contract. I think it was back in the fall, maybe. And this one is... I didn't do a side-by-side comparison. This one is modified. Personally, I think it's a lot better than the first one that we got. We got two attachments here. One is just all the village content that they had at their meeting from last week, in which they approved this. And now this has been sent over to us to review and approve if we choose, or send it back, or ask for additional clarity, or whatever it might be. Before I make a motion, since it is new to this meeting and it is a change from prior discussions, any questions, comments, concerns, anything like that regarding the IGA and any opposition to voting on it tonight are kind of my two questions for you all.
All right, I think it's definitely... It is a better-written agreement. It's clearly been negotiated between the lawyers on the village side and the district side. There's some terms in there about termination and such, but I... Those are standard things. Those don't give me any heartache because, to be perfectly honest, once we build a playground there, it's going to be part of the village and school infrastructure, and I... There's no... To me, in my mind, there is no risk that suddenly the village is going to decide to take it away. That would be... That would create community uproar, so I think the termination agreements are more standard things, so those don't give me... Those do not give me pause. There is a maintenance element in this. The village says that they're going to take over maintenance after we build it. And then if the costs... Essentially, I'm paraphrasing a little bit here, but if costs become too overwhelming for them, then they give us the option to take over those costs. And that's not, as I discussed with somebody else, that's not really any different than we do with any of our other playgrounds, so... The biggest thing is we are... We would be building a playground on land we don't own.
Yes.
However, we have a solid agreement, and the culture of the village is such that I think there's... The risk is infinitesimal.
I would maybe just add that, you know, I know the village went through a very thoughtful process in making sure that they got feedback from many different groups within the community, and I appreciate them taking a very thoughtful approach to this. And I think here, as a district, we, too, will take a very thoughtful approach to making sure that, you know, that the playground that we build is consistent with what the community needs and is consistent with the values of this community in preserving green space. And so I appreciate that the village took a thoughtful approach to it and look forward to building a great space for the kids.
Yeah, I would echo both of that. Just one thing I was gonna reiterate with the not owning our land, I think, when we originally got this, when I distinctly remember being at Hollywood, and I had the mindset of this being a lease because we had negotiated the Hollywood house that was a lease. And we don't own the land, but we were technically leasing it. This is not a lease. This is just an agreement. This will be a... We will install the park, but I guess, I don't know if you would say the village owns it, but it's on their land. They're gonna take over the maintenance. We're just gonna put it in. And so I think from the last meeting where I'd shared some of the conversation that Martha and I had with the village president, Doug Pollak, and the village manager, Jessica Francis, was kind of around that whole sentiment of, like, it is a very community-based. The Parks and Rec has gotten a lot of feedback from the community about things that the community wants more generally. We know that all the spaces that we build around here are gonna be used, not just by our students during student time, but community facilities, and so we've been very thoughtful around that. I think the one challenge that we're gonna have here, or one additional component that we need to consider here, is that broader community feedback. And so because it is village land and, like, the Parks Department is trying to do some park stuff, too, just being very thoughtful about kind of what you were saying, Selena, is like bringing them in and making sure that they're a part of the early dialogue, this all does need to go... Whatever we design, this is... I listened to the meeting as well, and Doug kind of made this comment, too. This is just an agreement to move forward, not a final decision on anything. And they're still working some stuff out with this whole basketball court thing, and whether it goes in or it doesn't go in, and how it goes in. That has nothing to do with us. We're gonna help design the playground, but they want some input on that as well, so just making sure Parks and Rec and whomever else in the communities... Preservation and all of them are in agreement with it, just being very thoughtful about that process so that we can move it fast... Move it through quicker and not get all the way to a trustee table and then have questions or concerns, and it gets, you know, kicked back and forth, so... I think you had mentioned we'd already... We'd let DLA know that we had this on the table and just kind of get them prepped for it, but working within that space... And one thing I would be also in agreement with, that the village has been specifically called out, was just the trees. And like, they're open to having a bigger footprint there. Just, we don't want to remove trees. Or at least, I think the comment was like, not removing trees if unnecessary.
Or mature trees.
Mature trees or some... So we'll figure that part out.
It's a very big area. There's... Most of it's undeveloped at this point, or at least the part where the playground is, I would say most of that area is undeveloped. So there are definitely some old trees there, which I'm sure will be fine and continue to exist as they are. My son loves the sticks that fall off of them, including the really big ones after big windstorms, so, you know, we definitely have to preserve those. But, yeah, it's... The more use we can make out of it, the better. The equipment that's there now is great, but it's a little dated. It's been there for a while. Definitely could use a refresh during the other playgrounds that we've been doing with all the other schools.
I'd like to point out, though, that there is like a section in here, because there is a question of ownership, that there is a section in here for re-subdivision of the property.
Yeah.
I do know that we're gonna negotiate in good faith on this, and so I do know there's no timelines on it, but that's probably the one thing that causes me a little pause. But at least we're addressing that in this agreement.
Yeah.
That gave me additional pause, too, but the way it's written, it's very mutual.
Right.
So it could... That discussion can last as long as it needs to. The other thing is, actually, this agreement could essentially be indefinite, the way it's written. There's no timeline. There's no... There are... The initial agreement expires after 10 years, but it has automatic renewals every five years.
Yeah.
And there's no term or duration to those automatic renewals. It doesn't say, "Two automatic renewals and you're done." It just says, "You renew every five years," so...
Yep, with 90-day advance notice prior to expiration of the current term.
Right, yeah.
After watching the village meeting, it was my understanding that the re-subdivision of the property primarily relates to consolidation of a bunch of lots on the property that are owned by the district, but they would just effectively consolidate them into one lot for us, right?
Yes.
It may be slightly more than that, and that's why... Currently, Blythe Park, essentially, you're right, but there's an additional piece to it. Right now, the Blythe Park school sits on maybe about 10 individual lots, but the amphitheater part extends past those... The defined limits of those lots, so that's where additional discussion and collaboration needs to happen.
Yeah, because it does start by saying, "Agree to negotiate in good faith a mutually acceptable re-subdivision."
And that's why I say that's...
Yeah.
That's very collaborative. It's very just gotta-figure-it-out kind of thing.
I think the intent, the way I'm understanding it, is to just do one big property line, but maybe there's more technicalities in it that it doesn't. But we'll have some back and forth.
Re-subdividing basically takes all those 10 lots that Selena mentioned.
Ten? It's a lot.
From memory, I'm working. Takes those 10, puts them together, but it may also redefine the border
Yeah.
between the village and the school.
Yeah. But overall, personally, I think this is... The last one wasn't terrible. This one's just better. I think it's more clear. There's less ambiguity. I had some concerns with some ambiguity. I think the maintenance cleanup in here also makes sense, too, because like my preference would have been, like, we're putting it in. It's kind of on near our property. We already got it, but if they want to take it on, that's fine. We have the option to take it over if they don't, so I definitely think this gives us some more flexibility for more long-term stuff here. Are we... Has everybody had enough time to read this, think about it, and offer a vote tonight?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And just by way of reminder, just as policy police, the... One of our policies, 120, lists out all of our IGAs, and so this one would be captured under just Village of Riverside, so no changes would be needed to policy with the addition of this IGA with the village, since we already have existing ones with them.
Thank you. All right, well, with that, I will make the motion, because I haven't done that yet. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the Blythe Park IGA as presented?
So moved. Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Great.
For... Okay, that's it for old business. We'll move into new business discussions. We've got two items here. One is the DuPage West Cooperative Member School District Resolution.
Sure, so there's a lot of detail in there from the executive director from our Special Education Cooperative. This is kind of one of these unique things that will come up. So DuPage West Cook is what I would almost describe as like a super cooperative, right? They take in... They have oversight around providing services for very low-incidence disabilities, deaf and hard-of-hearing, visually impaired. They have a... Given their current agreements, there's a very large organization that has required oversight. I think it's just been, I think it's like 62 districts. I don't have it, again, right back in front of me. I know it's in front of everybody to read if you have more questions, and I can certainly gather up that detail as I'm describing it. But the group really wants to move to an oversight committee, and the only way that they can do that is to have all the local school boards approve a resolution indicating that you would agree to that. So what I tried to do here is just bring in a lot of information from our Special Education Cooperative. Ellie Ambiel, who's our executive director, serves on that oversight committee that has really been functioning as a board. The oversight committee really just gives them more flexibility around, I think, meeting attendance, meeting requirements. They really want the work of DuPage West Cook to continue and around it, the work it does serving children. So this is new business, initial discussion. Ellie Ambiel also said she'd be happy to come if the Board of Education had come to a meeting if there were a lot more questions, but I thought we'd start by providing just a lot of written information, happy to take any questions back if there are questions, or maybe I can answer them. Nora, I don't know how much the directing group has followed this, or this has been more the directing board, so...
And the board's coming.
Got it, got it, okay. It's a requirement. I don't want to minimize it, but it's sort of around organizational logistics and bylaws and future agreements.
So essentially, it's changing the board from a board to a committee, like, to deal with attendance issues? Is that the big problem?
I believe it's like even just getting a quorum, and they're only because I think a quorum is the majority of the 62 districts, so I think this just makes some things easier and really removes probably some outdated procedures, is the way I understood it or understand it.
No core changes to the organization itself, though.
Exactly.
Because I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm not... I'll go with the recommendation here, because I'm not sure that I'm going to fully understand all the details.
It'd be my recommendation, because it is the recommendation of our Ladsy Cooperative, that the Board of Education approve it.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be tonight, so again, if people want more time to... But we would put it on the April agenda.
All right. If no other comments, I will move on.
Or any other questions, like, burning questions?
If I don't.
Okay.
Doesn't sound like it. Okay, so the last item, Village Board of Education Resolution Regarding Cook County Paid Leave Ordinance.
Happy to give a little context here also. So there's a new Cook County... See if I'm describing... Cook County Paid Leave Ordinance. It was introduced through legislation around an idea of giving particularly low-wage workers more flexibility around time off. There's some understanding that was never really intended to really fall on school districts as part of this. There was a lot of advocacy work that happened when this was first introduced. Schools kind of petitioned pretty vehemently to not be included. The exemption that was added was that no employees covered under collective bargaining agreements are sort of part of this agreement, and they are exempted from the agreement, which, as you know, would exempt a lot of our staff, the REC, and also our custodial union as well. And it doesn't pertain to administrators, but it would pertain to, interestingly, substitute teachers, long-term substitute teachers, and district office support staff, of which you know there are not a lot of additional employees that fall into that category. The idea is that employees would accrue one hour of paid time off for every 40 hours worked unless your village can exempt the school districts essentially from this Cook County Paid Leave Ordinance. So in working with the Village of Riverside, they have updated their ordinance that then would now exempt the school district employees from this paid leave, and the law came onto the books in January. The Village of Riverside passed this at their February meeting, and it is our... The advice of our attorney that school districts approve a resolution that honors the ordinance of the village. I believe that is what people call belt-and-suspenders approach to things, so that is why this is here on the agenda.
There's a lot of language in there that speaks to the belt-and-suspenders. The... We acknowledge all the purposes of the paid leave ordinance, but we are doing this thing.
Yeah. And there is still some movement, is my understanding legislatively, that this whole thing might go away. But for now, while it's still... I even... I did reach out to Ed Redd just this week, and she said it's being referred to subcommittee. I said, "Is that good news or not?" And she said, "It depends." So it's just been kind of a messy... Right now, we need to calculate paid time off for people that have served in our substitute, long-term substitute, and district office support, from the period from January 1 until February 20, I think was the date of the ordinance.
Okay, so this is not retroactive, so that...
Right, it's not retroactive.
And prior to this, those employees would not be getting that paid time off, then?
Right, they get... Well, substitutes don't get paid time off. I think there's an irony in the fact that it's substitutes that get this, but that's the way the law is written right now. So I don't... I don't... I shouldn't speak to the intention behind the law, because I honestly don't know, but, right. Substitute... So in our HR office, we go through and accrue how many hours a sub has worked. When they get to 40, they get one paid out or a lot.
Well, I don't even know, like, the way... Just having you describe it to me a couple times before tonight, it doesn't sound like the intent was to include school districts, period. It's just we have this small population that's not part of our collective bargaining, so technically, they fall into it.
Yeah.
And so we need to carve that out.
Yeah.
This is not up for vote tonight either, so as we...
Was this a county resolution or a state resolution?
County.
And I won't bring up that, as we took another look at Brookfield, Brookfield may not pertain, so a substitute who serves at Hollywood School for 40 hours... Anyway, we're gonna cross that bridge over time, so for now, this is the Riverside Cook County Paid Leave Ordinance. Appreciate the village passing. I mean, it really is helpful to us to have the villages in support with the passing of these ordinances. And many local villages have been working with their school districts to do just that.
Yeah, and as you just pointed out, and I have to remind myself from time to time, our municipality lines are not equal.
Right.
All right. Okay, this is not a voting action tonight, so we'll... I assume this one will also come up next week.
Yeah, and if there... Just if there are any questions that you would want me to bring back between now and then, that's why it's always helpful to present some of these, this new business. So for a vote, that whole business next meeting.
All right. No further... No new public comment, I'm guessing, Kathy? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna read the future meeting dates. We are gonna go back into closed session for a short period of time here tonight to finish some conversation that we couldn't get through before the meeting. But first, future meeting dates will be April 2, Committee of the Whole, 7:00 PM, at the multipurpose room of Hollywood School. April 16 will be a regular business meeting at 7:00 PM here in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. May 7 will be the biannual organization meeting at 7:00 PM at the multipurpose room in Ames. And May 21 will be a regular business meeting at 7:00 PM here in the Hauser Auditorium. And I need to make a new motion to go back into closed session, so is there a motion for the Board of Education to enter into closed session for the following purposes? The appointment, employment, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or the representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules of one or more classes of employees, and the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06.
So moved. Second.
It should probably also be pointed out that we're not gonna come back.
Yeah.
Got ahead of me, Dave.
Thought you would mention it. Sorry.
I probably should have. Yeah, there will be no voting action after this discussion, and we will not be even convening to open session. So is that a second?
Yes.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
I certainly can. Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.